Can't see the clock. I believe at 6:30. And I'm calling to order the meeting of the Lewis Planning Commission for Wednesday, May 15th, and we are beginning at 6:30 PM. Call the meeting to order and then make a few announcements before we get going. First of all, does anyone else have any announcements to make? Are you heading to the?
No, I just need to-
Okay, I thought you were heading to the microphone. First announcement is there is coffee. It is decaf coffee back there. And there are treats. And thank you to Janelle for the cupcakes and delicious cherry pistachio bark. And I have brought the cookies. And I brought the cookies because I have another announcement to make, and that is that I'll be stepping down as both chair and from the planning commission. And you may recall a while ago, I made a commitment that whenever a member of the planning commission served, as long as Joe had served on it, which was, I think, 10 years. So whenever anyone makes 10 years, I will bake a cake for them, as I did for Joe. And I'd like you to know that while I'm stepping down from the planning commission and all of my other responsibilities in terms of the planning commission, I do plan to still meet that obligation. So when each of you make your 10-year point, as long as I'm still above ground, I will happily bring you the cake of your choice baked at home, okay? So I couldn't bring a cake to say, to give as my farewell, because I didn't spend 10 years. I only had four years. I think it's four, yes. Time flies when you're having fun. It didn't seem like four years. So I brought cookies instead. So it's a special thank you to everyone. And I do want to say a thank you to everyone on the commission, both present and past that I've served with. Because when I came on board, I, you know, I was asked if I would do this, and I thought, you know, it would be good to learn new things. And, boy, has it been a steep learning curve, okay? Hopefully, I've climbed it. But one thing that has really made it worthwhile is getting to serve with all of you. And, you know, we have a small town, but we have lots of volunteers. And you, a lot of this is hidden, I think. And so until I served on the planning commission, I had no true appreciation of the time and work and just thought and commitment that people put into it. And it's been, it's been an inspiration to see that. And when you think about the number of commissions and committees that the city has, there's literally a whole army of volunteers, you know, working and helping keep our city moving I also want to thank, though, and I think they're also, in many ways, a kind of hidden asset, and that's our city employees. And it has been fantastic to work with a professional city planner, to work with all of the folks from GMB, both Charlie, Brett, and the others that I don't see, not to mention the incredible interns that you guys have managed to get. And I don't know what well you're going to, but keep going back to it, okay? So, you know, we've got Blue, who no one ever sees because she's being over in the corner here, operating our technology for us. And we have lots of other folks at City Hall who host our meetings, et cetera, that, quite frankly, I've never met even, as well as contractors like Alex Burns, who helps keep us honest and legal, which is very important these days. So a super big thanks to all of you. But I don't think we have many people online right now, but I'll just say this, so maybe someone will pass it on. Oh, we've got two people. You can pass this on to all of the other members of the public who either tune in on Zoom or come out for hearings or come out for workshops, because you may not realize how important your feedback is to us. And we really do take it into consideration. It's a great going, I don't, I don't want to say it's, I was about to say it's great leaving, but I didn't mean to say that. That is not a Freudian slip. It's inspiring, perhaps, to be leaving right after we've got an important piece of environmental code change that just went through mayor and city council. And it was a long path. When I first joined the commission, it was right at the point when the former, we didn't call it Environmental Committee, what did we call it?
Water.
Sea Level Rise Committee was kind of disbanding without moving forward with approval of any code change. And it's been great to see how things change over time in terms of awareness and appreciation, but also the hard work that I think the subcommittee put in, in terms of discussions you've had, the education that went into the workshops, the hearings, et cetera. And we'll never have 100% agreement, and I know there are folks who wish we had done more and folks wished we'd done less. But the important thing is we have taken a step forward, just as I think we took a big step forward on the subdivision code in terms of making it a code that we felt better about complying with, is, I guess, the best way of putting it. So because I thought yet next meeting was going to be my last meeting, I didn't prepare any comments. So these, this is my farewell and goodbye comments. And I made them at the beginning, because I know how these meetings can go over time. And I wanted to basically force you all to hear them before you slipped out the door as soon as the meeting was ending, okay? There is decaf coffee and all kinds of treats there. And please feel free during the meeting to get up and head over. And if you're on Zoom, come on down, there's coffee and treats tonight. And there are little baggies there. So at the end of the meeting, whatever's left over in terms of the cookies I brought, you need to take home with you, because they are not going back into my house, okay? And that's it. Any other announcements? Let me open the floor for public comment. We've said we're having public comment at the beginning and the end of this meeting. No one is rushing to the microphone here in the room. If you're on Zoom, if you could raise your hand if you wanted to make a comment. And I think that's a no. Oh, thank you. You, I've never heard such an outpouring of support for the lack of public comment. And I don't want that to discourage anyone that, at the end of the meeting, when I ask for it, okay? Next, we have our minutes. Any comments on the minutes of April 17th?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of April 17.
Okay, move by Commissioner Evald, seconded by Commissioner Heffernan. All in favor?
Aye.
Passed. Next, we have a presentation from Brent Jet to give us an overview of wetlands. And we thought it was best to have this presentation before we get to unfinished business, which will be looking at the wetlands draft that's coming forward to us. So over to you.
Okay. I'll try to make this quick and simple. A lot of people have already seen this, and if you've done your homework, you already have learned a lot of this along the way. The one thing I wanted to do is read the quote from Theodore Roosevelt from 1907, which is, "The nation behaves well if it treats the natural resources as assets which it must turn over to the next generation, increased and not impaired in value." So why are we discussing wetlands? Well, wetlands are everywhere, all around us. Denrec estimates 50% of Sussex County contains wetlands in it. We had an ordinance before. It's been in the SCOTUS decisions lately. The state is pushing for their own laws now. The county has done their own thing. So we wanted to kind of look at what we had, clean it up a little bit, and move forward. So going through, we'll go through wetlands definitions, the delineation of them, the various types, the importance of them, the SCOTUS decision, and then a couple of questions at the end, if you have any. So definition of wetlands is wetlands, marsh, bogs, fens, seasonal, salt, brackish, fresh, tidal, non-tidal, disconnected. All of them are sorts of wetlands that exist around us, determined by vegetation, the soil type, and the hydrology. There's a lot of work that goes in behind that. I can probably give you a 50/50 guess if it's wetlands or not, but there, we'll get into it, but there's actually an international soil scientist consortium that authorizes people that delineate these things, that have much more experience and know exactly what they're looking at better than I do. So first off, there is a wetlands mapper. There is a database that is updated occasionally here and there. It's a good start to look to see if you believe if you have wetlands. It will give you a possible, or let's look further, kind of thought process on this. The next step is a field determination by one of those soil scientists that's authorized. They'll go through, walk the site, check the vegetation, check the soils, and delineate what's out there. So that desktop inquiry is what I was speaking to, the wetlands mapper. And the wetlands in Delaware has an estimated 125,000 acres of tidal and 225,000 acres of freshwater, non-tidal wetlands. However, from 81 to 2017, over 5,000 acres of wetlands were lost, either because of development or drowning out, or sea level rise, or migration, or whatever.
Brad, is that, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Is that 5,000 acres that's been lost, is that a combination of tidal and non-tidal?
I believe it is.
Okay.
So the function of wetlands?
Habitat.
Stormwater retention.
Habitat.
Flood conveyance.
Habitat.
Flood protection.
Habitat.
Erosion control.
Habitat.
And open space and aesthetic value for quality of life. This kind of shows you the lay of the land from higher ground to the tidal areas of how things progress and how the water moves underneath. It's kind of a high-level cross-section, but it gives you an idea of moving from, we really don't have a Piedmont, but if you were in Virginia, the Piedmont area, moving towards the coastal area, how the water moves underneath, how it fills from underneath some of these little tidal basins or freshwater lakes and ponds and everything. And when it gets down to the end, then you've got the saltwater estuary, which we have in the bay. This is a little closer book, probably better suited directly towards Lewis itself. You've got the upland and then kind of the swampy area. And yes, the swamp is where the trees are. The marsh is where the low vegetation is. Both of them can be types of wetlands. And then you get into the, they call it lake, because I pulled it off a site that had lakes, but open water, and you can have tidal water over on that side. So you can see how the progression kind of moves down the stream. So the importance of wetlands, this is one that FEMA uses quite frequently, little cartoon. You can see on the left, normal day. In the middle, it's raining. On the right is after the rain. The top section is just having a wetland and open space around it. The bottom is having all that pressure from development around it. And you can see the difference of the resiliency coming back, bouncing back to a normal open space versus having flooded development. I wish this one was reversed, because everything else has gone from left to right downstream, but you get the idea. As sea level rises, we're starting to lose that marsh, because it's drowning out the non-tidal vegetation in there. But the importance of the slopes coming off of that is so that the marsh and the vegetation can migrate. Takes approximately two months of inundation to form a wetland, to change the hydrology in the soil. The two months that we had in January and February that were over a foot pushed over tide, there are some areas that were probably questionable before, that if you had gone out on March 1st, probably would have been delineated as wetlands now. It's not going to gather back that 5,000 acres that we've lost over that time, but it's going to move. So that's the importance of having a buffer, is to allow that accordion effect of what the wetlands do naturally. So the importance of the connection, you can see the little fishies and crabs, that's why I wore the shirt today. In the open water, you know, when it, sea level rise during higher tides, the water's creeping further into the land. If we cut it off, then we're basically drowning out any of those transitional vegetations and cutting off any chance for, excuse me, the vegetation on the upland side in that non-tidal transition. This is a good example. I worked in Cambridge for almost eight years, driving across the Vienna Bridge, looking at the Nanticoke River every day and how it's expanded in that marsh area on the Wycomiko side and the hocks. This picture isn't from there, but it very well could be from anywhere in Southern Dorchester County. The wetlands, the tidal wetland people in Maryland have gotten to the point that have said, if there is a tree in the tidal wetlands, it's dead, it just doesn't know it yet.
What is a hawk?
A hawk is a, the dead stalks, trunks of trees.
Ghost, right?
Yeah, so it's a ghost forest. A singular is a hawk. Yeah.
And can I ask, is this, I don't know the cause, but a prime hook. Is this the cause of prime hook, or was it the?
A little bit of-
Prime hook got cut off, so it didn't have that flow.
So it was just standing and stagnant. And when you inundate trees that are used to having roots dry for a good portion of the time, they end up dying.
How did it get cut off?
I don't know whether it was because of siltation in there. I know that they've opened it up. They have tide gates in there now for the flush.
But also the salt, the salt, what?
It was flooded.
It was flooding.
Yeah, I think it got cut off and it got flooded, so it couldn't drain back out. So the salt water that got stuck in there kind of-
The salt water gets under the bark of trees?
Yes.
Okay, and kills the trees. So just what Brent's saying, if you see it, it won't be there much longer, and the salt is really the killer.
And we have this in the great marsh in there.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I just, for our, for our, you know, for our big audience here, to make sure people understand, this is local, too.
Yeah.
Yes.
Right here.
Yeah.
So this is, this is where I push people for a concise of thought on trees, because, you know, this is coastal, so you're losing coverage here. But looking at those trees, they're probably 40, 50 years old. Most of them are volunteers anyway, but they're 50 years old. You're not going to go back in and replace 80, 50-year-old trees immediately. It's a process. So it's cyclical. You know, it's going to take time. It's going to take 10 years of planning to get things going, but it's the right tree in the right place and the right spot, and understanding that in the future, if there is sea level rise and additional flooding and pressures, that other trees that we have now could be, you know, in harm's way. And like, we're working in Oxford, there's a lot of 200, 250-year-old trees there that are one good windstorm away from being done. So the SCOTUS decision basically said that if the wetland is disconnected from a surface, a continuous surface connection, so if it's not connected to direct drainage, then it's just a wet spot. And they don't have authority over it. So it basically turned it back over to the states. Some states are, okay, we'll just wait to see what you do next. Some states are like, all right, well, they don't exist anymore, they're wet spots, you can do whatever. Some states have actively gone forward in trying to take the Army Corps 404 authority away from them and do it in-house, in-state. Maryland is pushing that now.
Delaware has a draft bill now.
They have a draft bill that, that actually goes not against this decision, but says that we want to protect all wetlands, whether they're connected or not.
Brad, is this SCOTUS decision compatible with the much earlier side, I, number two or three, where you, I wish I'd written it down, and I failed to do so. Right in there, the first bullet, where it talks about wetlands, marsh, bog, and fresh tidal, non-tidal, disconnected.
Basically, the disconnected and potentially non-tidal.
Right, but that definition is by wetland scientists or professionals.
Correct.
Is that compatible with this agreement?
So what they're saying is, we understand that there's all types of wetlands, but the only things that are protected by federal law are those that are connected by direct drainage to an open body of water. So rivers, streams, yeah.
What would be local examples in Lewis of a connected and a non-connected?
Canary Creek, or Canary Creek, sorry.
Canary, yeah.
I'm sure if they're Milton or Larry, sorry.
Is it connected, right?
So Canary Creek is a tidal body of water that drains into the canal, which drains through the bay.
So that would be connected?
Connected, yeah.
And what would be a non-connected example?
White's Pond.
Okay.
Because it's isolated.
Yeah, okay.
And are both of those brackish, or are they?
White's Pond is fresh. It's a standalone-
Because under the state-
Cut off.
The state's bill that's proposed, they're looking at protecting freshwater.
Right, so that's, White's Pond is freshwater, so that's, that's why they wrote freshwater in there, because typically if it's freshwater, it's disconnected body.
The state bill is really focusing on the non-tidal. That's why you see it that way. Because of the Supreme Court decision, just as Brent said, Delaware is actually stepping forward with, because this is such a huge environmental asset that we have, Delaware's stepping forward to say, how do we protect it, the non-tidal?
And the easiest-
The Supreme Court didn't say you couldn't do it.
Yeah.
They just said, the Army Corps of Engineers and the federal program wasn't going to protect.
The easiest way to look at, like, freshwater is, we have a lot of mill ponds around here. So like Killen's Pond and all that, that were man-made for either the fill or recreation or whatever. Those things are disconnected. They will have an outfall that spills over, but if you were to cut that off, it's just a standalone freshwater body.
I think a good example is Mariner's Retreat.
Okay.
Because it's not really connected to Canary Creek or the canal or the Delaware Bay, but there were certainly non-tidal wetlands in the middle of that development that the developer worked around. But that would be a good example of, ones that aren't covered now by federal regulation.
Now, we're going to come back to this topic in a while, but let me just check if there are other, any other questions, because we will later, we're going to be covering housing, and then we'll be coming back to this. But if there, I'm not trying to cut off questions, sorry.
No, no, no.
Any other questions for Brett?
I wanted to call it back to what Charlie just said. In that example, the developer, you know, did work around the non-tidal, but in the county, there aren't any requirements for that. Is that correct? They can fill them or do whatever, right?
No, they're required to.
If they're non-tidal?
There's a square footage limit of 5,000 square feet that, less than that, they don't need to mitigate, but more than that, if they disturb more than 5,000 square feet of wetlands of any type, then they need to mitigate, which means create wetlands to make up the difference. So that's statewide.
They bolstered theirs in October.
Yeah, I was going to say, okay, so that's it, all right.
Yeah. So it was around time of this, but some people have been, were working on it. These things take time. Some people have been working on state or county wetland ordinances, and then SCOTUS came out and kind of just muddied the water. I mean, like, I think, like, states like Wyoming are like, I don't know what to do. You know, like, there's very few things in Wyoming that are connected to-
To, yeah.
Flowing water outside of the Wyoming River. So they're like, I don't, it's all cattle ranch, and do we, you know?
I will tell you this, that when, when we work on any project that has wetlands that will be disturbed, for instance, if we were to drill our water main underneath the canal, because that's obviously all tidal marsh wetlands on either side, on one side, it's easy, relatively easy to, and timely to get a U.S. Corps of Engineers permit. It is over a year to get a DNREC sub-aquous permit, and you have to have both when you do those types of projects. So the state process, I wouldn't say it's more difficult, it's just very more time-consuming to get it. But they do have a thorough process of permitting, yes.
Thank you so much for, these presentations, I think, have really helped us each time we get them, so thank you.
I'm going to at least show off the picture.
Okay, we're moving-
There.
Lance, if you want to stand this-
There's a pretty picture of a wetlands for you.
You need to ask, everybody needs to ask, who took that picture?
Who took that picture? Oh, wow!
I thought you were going to claim that.
Maryland DNR loves that picture.
I, I would have been afraid it was like one of those professional ones that you may be- I, I, I would have been afraid it was like one of those professional ones that you maybe pulled down from the internet without, you know, the rights, I would never have asked the question, okay?
No, hundred dollar point and shoot camera.
Wow. Beautiful photo. Bob, over to you. And I, I should say, just as a quick introduction to this, this committee has worked long and hard on this, so.
Let me get to the right page.
Yeah.
Okay. Affordable housing, workforce housing, Housing Subcommittee. So, well, one thing I did today was I checked Senator Huxtables SB twenty-three. And it has been referred to committee and nothing has changed. So it's there. Is that not right? So there's more something new?
Yeah, I talked to, I talked to Russ. It's, it's been referred to committee, but there are lots of amendments going to be proposed. There, it, it hasn't been officially changed yet.
Yeah.
But there are a lot of changes that are on the works that are going to be put into the next bill. Including, well, we can talk about it if you go to your, well, our, but there are some things that really are related to. And, and I'll tell you, the, the biggest change, quite frankly, are bringing back global control. A lot of the things that were in that bill that took away global.
Reality, yeah.
Probably put back into the bill, um, step by step. Parking, for instance, it's gonna have more flexibility. You're gonna be allowed, you're gonna be allowed to exclude return rentals in his bill.
That's what he says, but that's not what's.
No, 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 that's, that's, it is coming.
Yeah, well, we'll see, okay? And, and so there's no imminent action of it's being reported out and voted on, you know? But that's more than I, I know.
He, he has a subcommittee, they're asking meeting on next week, supposed to be, and, and before next week, they'll have a new amendment.
Well, okay. Maybe we gotta go, right. So, um, you have all seen most of this before. We did get it formalized into an ordinance. And there are really only a couple of changes from things we've told you, so we won't repeat all that. One significant change is that the ADU has been made a separate section of the code. And separately, also in this package is, Janelle has made the changes she wanted to, to make the accessory building and uses separate. So they're, they're not confused. Then, after a lot of discussion, we ca- we changed the lease term. Kinda had to vote on that. Uh, but we made the lease term to be twelve months with shorter terms allowable by application to the city planner or building inspector for shorter terms allowable for tenants who would work within fifteen miles of Lewis. And that went basically addressing our workforce issues and you know, not trying to say they had to live in Lewis, or, you know, a teacher could live here and work in somewhere else in the, the school district and so on, and, you know, fifteen miles seemed to be a good compromise. And it kept us out of, what are you doing? You know, approving certain professions or anything like that. Uh, so that's where we came out, okay? We had a vote. And then, um, and that's lines sixty-two to sixty-six. And, um, then we had a lot of discussion about allowable rents. And, um, on line one twelve, we came up with a table. And not a surprise to you, but we said an efficiency is a thousand dollars. One bedroom, twelve hundred. Two bedroom, fourteen hundred. And we sort of then came up with a index that it would increase with.
Can I jump in on something?
Please.
Yeah, and, and just to clarify, when we say allowable rents, um, any rent is allowed. But in order to benefit from any incentive that the city will offer, you must keep within these rents, so.
So just for clarification, this is, the incentive is to eliminate the GRRT for the ADUs that are renting at this rate. To, uh, it, it was the, one of the things they came up, the subcommittee came up with as an incentive. So that's why this is in the GRRT section of the city code.
Can I ask a question?
So if the rental council can add, you know, any other incentives, then they certainly could do so too.
But if someone chose to rent at a higher amount, then that, you're not recommending that they would get that incentive?
Well, they would not get that.
They would not get it.
Okay, I wanna clarify that, I thought that's what.
Only if you do
Are staying at this.
With table B.
Yeah.
If you're renting at three thousand a month, you don't qualify, because that's not an affordable rental.
Cause this is considered, based on the data that we have, forward.
And I should know the answer to this, um, but I don't, and I didn't look it up beforehand. The definition of a, of a bedroom.
Could be a wall.
Well, I mean.
Does it need a closet?
It, it's.
Is it a wall, straight?
Yeah, exactly. Is it square footage? Does it have to have a window? Uh, does it have, you know?
Well, we would fall back on city code for that, right?
Well, that's why I'm wondering what it is in city code.
So it is a room or space designed to be used for sleeping purposes with two means of egress, one of which may be a window that meets egress requirements of the currently enforced edition of the International Residential Code. Spaces used for eating or cooking, bathrooms, toilet rooms, closets, halls, storage or utility rooms, and similar uses are not considered bedrooms.
So if you have, uh, I'm just making up a situation here. Uh, if you had an A-frame and there's a ladder up to a loft that has a mattress on the floor, is that a bedroom?
If it meets the room or space with two means of egress.
If it has a window, if it has a window, then it would be.
Yeah, cause it's got the ladder up and then an egress ladder out, yes.
You don't have to be able to stand up before you get into bed?
Not in the bedroom definition, in other sections of probably the residential code, there are height requirements for ceiling height, there's a, there's a minimum ceiling height.
Right, there is a minimum ceiling height for habitable space, so that would apply, that's in the International Building Code.
Okay.
Seven or eight feet, yeah.
Does that, does that actually answer your question, Nancy, with respect to the bathroom definition? Does that satisfy your question?
I said bedroom.
I'm sorry, I thought you said bathroom.
No, bedroom, yeah.
Oh, excuse me. I withdraw my.
That's why, that's why you were giggling, I, I thought your mind was going into other, definitely other places in terms of bedroom, but.
I apologize.
And that definition of bedroom is in chapter one fifty, which is the rentals section of the code, which this, um, proposed ordinance references compliance with. Sorry, Bob, go, um, get out of there.
So those are the changes. I mean, we copied ferociously from lots of places. The first twenty-six lines are straight from Senator Huxtables' bill. We made up a few more. Line sixty-two is the, sixty-two to sixty-seven is the term.
But I have a, I have a question.
Sure.
First of all, you guys have done a heroic work.
Yes.
Okay, really heroic work, this is a very, um, difficult task to me. One of the things that you told us about early on was another benefit of these, not, not just the workforce housing, but was the movement of stay in place. So we can see homes in Lewis where as people age, they might want to move out to smaller space, rent their, let's call it the big house, and they're in the smaller house. Or they may want to let a caretaker be there, whatever. So, but they're not thinking of this, you know, they're not wanting short-term rental, they're not thinking of having rental income necessarily. They just want that carriage house to then be where they can live. Can they, if this is passed, can they apply and put in the bathroom in the kitchen, which they now can't do? And then, but they have to apply even though they're never gonna, um, assume rent. So they would still apply for a permit to do that, as if they were doing this, even though that's not their intent. They pass away, they then have something that looks an awful lot like this, or a long, or a short-term rental. How then do we guard the direction of too many of our properties turning into rental properties? So, I mean, I'm totally supportive of what this is, I'm just wanting to do that other piece that you all mentioned, which I thought was very compelling, and particularly when you look at the population of Lewis, the average age. There are a lot of people that wanna stay in their home and actually can't even afford to go to one of the higher-end, um, long-term.
And I wanna add to that too, just that we need to keep thinking about the ADU as more than a separate building.
Right.
Um, the ADU could be within the house, and that some people just live in a two or three-story house.
Yep.
They, you know, are not, are no longer accessing the upper floors. And they can convert that space, that's also covered under this, that is an ADU.
Okay, I just think in, in the communication, well, in the communication to the public, some people will care about this side, and some people will care about the other, but what you've designed is something that can meet both. Right, but my question is, then you sell the property, what happens?
But I think someone can rent out, someone can rent out a property, any property that they own right now. So I could rent out my house, I could rent out a room in the house.
Sure.
I could, I, I think I could partition it and rent out part of it if it had a bathroom and everything else, can't I? I guess I'm turning it into a dupe, now, now I'm turning it into a duplex, yeah, okay, okay.
At some point, yeah.
I'm turning it into a multifamily, but.
Yes.
But the point is, if you have a building behind your house or attached to your house, aren't you allowed to, to rent it out?
Yeah, that's right, and getting back to your original question there.
Yeah.
There is a provision on line one seventy-four. Um, in the first year, there will be a limit of forty ADUs. That's a one-year limit, and it, uh, does not apply for future years, but it's a continuing discussion to have. And so that forty ADU limit applies to both rentals and, um, ADUs that will not be rented. So if someone rents their ADU, they can also, uh, let the rental period expire and live in it.
Okay.
But wait, building off of your question, if the ADU is part of the big house or the main house, and isn't a, a separate, uh, unit outside of it, if we are issuing an ADU permit to that, aren't we making that house a duplex?
Yes.
So, are things.
Because there is, there's a definition of a, 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 an attached dwelling, and it has, um.
So it's not a duplex, two-deeded, separately, properties at that point?
Oh, you're right.
No, um, so give me just one second, let me find.
And it wouldn't be two-deeded separate properties, so.
I, I, I can tell you why she's looking this up. I mean, my, my issue with some of these things and, you know, is, is gonna be enforcement. Because to both of your points on this, you get somebody that does this and puts these in place. How's that gonna be enforced? Because, you know, now they say, okay, we're not using it as an ADU anymore. We have provisions in there that you lose that certificate of occupants for that ADU. But we already know we have issues right now with people that are using things that, that aren't permitted under our code. So going forward, you know, that's, that's a big concern. The other concern I have is, is the term that we love to use, and you, these guys know it, is the affordable. And I will tell you, the one thing I brought to Alex's attention tonight, because this just came out, was that the Senate, in one of their bills now, uh, Senate Bill twenty-two, they actually are removing affordable from their definitions in a lot of these things. Because they're saying that change in terminology is to avoid confusion with that, within the housing industry, where the word affordable is generally accepted to mean housing for a median income level of eighty percent and below. So a lot of our wherethes, which are not code part of this and everything, reference affordable. And, and that, that, that's always struck, and both of you guys know, that's always struck the thing with me.
We live back and forth on the word affordable and workforce multiple times.
Yeah.
Without resolving it. And, uh, no doubt there'll be that article, and there'll be another one tomorrow. One of the requirements we have written in here is that the owner has to live in one of these.
Yeah.
Okay, that's on line one ninety-five.
Yeah, a couple of questions.
Which addresses part of your issue, yeah.
I have a couple of issues, go fast. One on the.
Kevin.
Forty permit issue. So there, there are a number of ADUs out there existing in the city today that are, as we know, without proper permitting, right? And we're gonna ask them to come into, into, into compliance, correct? And so part of the forty will be the existing ones. They'll come in, in the existing. Are we gonna, so if there's those, I think, ADUs in the short-term rental market, are we gonna require them to be long-term rentals? The ones that are already there?
In my opinion, yes.
So not gonna, not gonna grandfather them.
So, so I guess.
Those are currently illegal ones we're talking about.
That's true.
I mean, so.
And for me, devil's advocate on that question, is for them to enforce it, they have to know about that. So if you're running an illegal ADU as a short-term rental, are, are you applying for this?
No.
No.
So I guess that's, that's part of that issue right there. We're, we're hoping that people come out of this and, and transfer those ADUs into legal ADUs. But if they're using them for short-term rentals or something that doesn't fit in this, then are they? You know, just maybe into devil's advocate, are they gonna apply for it at that point?
And, and just a comment on, on that topic, is that I know the city in, um, the last five years probably has, um, assertively tried to use the online platforms and track the illegal SDRs in Lewis. And unless people are not on Airbnb or Virgo or, you know, or with an agency, they, it really low-key about it. Thoughts are, they've already been tracked down, and the city is aware of them, because that, a lot of those have occurred, correct?
Yes, we have identified a number of what is current, cause they're currently being used to short-term rentals, that have not, that at one point did not have an appropriate rental license. Um, and the city still has a contract with a, a group to, uh, to, um, research and provide on a monthly or at random basis, can't remember how, what the timeframe is, of properties they find that we don't have on our system. And we also have staff that are researching and calling and, and looking into, to make sure we're getting them all.
This is not like ancient history, and this has been going on because the, the city didn't have a rental license or a rental tax until eighteen months ago.
So, the city's had a rental license for a long time. It's just about eighteen months ago, they created a rental chapter in the city code and identified short-term and long-term rentals within the code, and a process and, and definitions and penalties and other requirements that are needed to maintain a short-term or a long-term rental within the city.
So enforcement really started more recently.
Again, we've, we've been tracking rentals for a while. We always look, kinda see where we are with rentals. We actually have more rentals right now than we did last year. And it kinda goes, it ebbs and flows a little bit, especially on the short-term, but we've also, I think, seen a slight uptick in long-term rentals. But we all know some of those are ADUs.
I'd like to go back to the stay-in-place question, because I, I don't think I articulated it well enough, and, and...
I think you articulated it, just Bob started to answer it.
Okay.
And then, so it was one, line one-ninety-one, and you asked if, what would be prevent, would we prevent in the future?
Well, that's one part of it. The other, the first part is, just as the chair mentioned, so you have a house, and you decide that a wing of your house, maybe your bathroom is only on the second floor, and you wanna stay in place. So you put a bathroom on the first floor. I can imagine many people in Lewis, as they age, that wanna stay on their property. Let's say they don't have an accessory building. They can go do that with a building permit. I want to add a bathroom, a shower, or maybe a kitchenette, okay, and they stay there. Or they have that for their home care person. They can do that under our code, that's just a building. But if they wanted to do it in their cottage, that's my question is, they can do it in their house if they wanna do it in the cottage, and they don't plan to rent it out, now they're gonna be in the pool of the forty? Okay, and I'm just saying, is there a way?
For the first year.
For the first year only.
For the first year only.
Only for the first.
Only, yeah.
Oh, okay.
I mean, I don't think.
Okay, because I think that's something you could hear from the public, that, wait a minute, I love what you're doing, but mine is this, and I don't have enough room in my house, but.
So the reason for the forty was because we have a small city staff?
Oh, well, reasonably.
And we were looking at that as, I don't think we're gonna have a hundred to buy it first day one, but if we did, they just wouldn't be able to handle that.
Okay, so it's just, it's executing and rolling out the program.
Right, finding out little bugs and hitches and stuff.
And also indicating that Marion City Council could change that number by ordinance.
Yeah, Barbara?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. First of all, it talks about sewer, separate sewers not being required. It doesn't address electric. Second question is, that shall not exceed nine hundred square feet for the first floor. Is that applicable to the ADUs as well? It's under the accessory buildings and structures?
Yes.
And is that acceptable? That was a decision?
Well, what we meant was, I mean, nine hundred square feet is the, the building, accessory building thing. So we just copied that, because some of those.
If, for instance, the garage, if you wanna convert the garage, and you have a large garage, is that, would you be able to convert the whole garage to the ADU, or would you have to, with that be accepted as a rule? If you have, shouldn't it be, the ADU should be not exceed the existing footprint of a building you're converting, as opposed to a limit on the square footage?
So the limit on the square footage was removed a couple of versions ago. It shows up in the one section of code that's not in blue, because the maximum footprint of an accessory building and structure is nine hundred square feet at, at the floor, like your first floor. But the subcommittee did a lot of discussion, and they ended up taking out the minimum, because if you have like a basement or a second floor, that could be more than nine hundred square feet. They ended up doing that. So they removed the, the maximum square footage, or the minimum.
Even if you were doing something in your house, and you had two stories, and you wanted to convert, it's a three thousand square foot house, and fifteen hundred square feet is gonna be the accessory. We didn't, that didn't concern us one way or the other.
So it shows up on line two-twenty-two, but that's current code on the size of an accessory building and structure. So if you have a detached garage, it's not supposed to be more than nine hundred square feet for the first floor.
So we did that to keep it compliant with current codes.
So an ADU doesn't have a maximum.
So there shouldn't be a garage out there that's more than nine hundred square feet, is that what you're saying?
There shouldn't be.
Okay.
I'm not saying there aren't. The code says no more than nine hundred square feet. I, I, I can't speak to past practices. But for the last several years, it's, we've made sure they're nine hundred square feet, no more than nine hundred square feet, on just the first floor, so you can do your half-story. But again, if you're gonna build an ADU that, you know, brand-new, it's gonna be an accessory structure. You're only getting nine hundred square feet on the first floor, because that's your maximum square footage of an accessory building or structure.
And that's, line two-eighteen starts, that's the part that Janelle is cleaning up of the existing code.
Yes.
I'm just, I'm just thinking about somebody coming in with a bigger footprint than nine hundred square feet wants to convert. Now, are we gonna say, you can't be larger than nine hundred square feet?
No, no, it's just, it's new construction as a detached structure, it's not supposed to be more than nine hundred square feet. So if you, if you have a non-conforming twelve-hundred-square-foot first-floor garage, convert away if this gets approved.
Okay, but you can't go and build a new one.
No, that's not.
Yeah.
That's nine hundred and two.
Yeah. If I could, one other question regarding, just to get over the idea of not, those people who have these second homes who aren't gonna be able to convert to ADUs, because they're not living here full-time in one of the buildings. And that excludes a lot of property owners in Lewis, quite frankly. It's a, there's a large number, it's about forty percent, I think, somewhere along those lines, of second homes here, that are gonna be excluded for this ordinance because of that rule. And so I'm wondering if a better way to do this, as opposed to doing that, is just require, if you wanna convert an ADU and you're not living here, you require a local property manager to manage the ADU. Somebody here is present, so there's not that absentee landlord issue that the committee brought up.
So, so here's my two cents on that, and that would go to a vote, 'cause, you know, it's gonna go through here, so if people wanna vote for that. I would be against that a hundred percent.
Which, which part?
This is an, well, I'll get to that. This is an accessory dwelling unit. This is not a rental unit that we're trying to create, long-term or short-term. So I, I wouldn't want something that doesn't have an owner occupant living in one or the other side.
I agree. I think the safeguard that you put in there is about keeping neighborhoods and, and keeping the, those who are going to take advantage of this in a positive way for housing, then they're in the fabric of our community. So. I agree, for any other reason, but I agree the same, the same way.
Yeah, I understand that, too, but we have rental laws throughout the city that where the owners know we're here.
Well, we have, we have long-term rentals.
So we have long-term rentals, too, where the owners know we're here, and it still has fabric of the, these people still contribute to the fabric of the city. It's, it's the idea, though, here is that we didn't want an absentee landlord, and that's my understanding of it on the community. So, but if we have a full-time property manager whose responsibility is to maintain those properties and maintain a relationship with the tenant, and, and it's, I don't see how that's a detriment to the city overall. And, and, and really, the mission here is to provide more housing, and that's really what the community's mission has been all along, is provide more housing. We should be out there trying to encourage less housing to be, to bring along as possible. And by excluding people who don't live here, you're eliminating about forty percent of the property owners from this bill. And so you would have far more ADUs out there, far more of that, that housing that we're looking for, if we allowed folks to do it who don't live here full-time.
I just respectfully disagree, but.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I could share a mic, too.
Okay, Deborah, then Barbara, then Tim. Okay, I'm going down the road.
I'll try to hit Deborah. Number one, as we developed this, we walked into this with really having participated, or at least observed, everything that had occurred during the STR.
Subcommittee work.
Subcommittee, and the voices that were heard from the community. The concern, this is a special new category, that we're trying to create some more housing for long-term tenants, and for the workforce in this community. What it is not is a gift to...
Property owners.
For property owners to make money off of. So, we really came into this with a careful attitude, how many, what safeguards can we put in to make sure that this is part of the community? One of the big ones is that if you were, you know, a senior citizen perhaps, living in your home, you could have this ADU where you would have a stable tenant in there, who might be someone on your property for safety, security, and comfort. And that could be a relationship with neighbors as well. We did not want this to become, and still do not, an opportunity to ever become more short-term housing, short-term rental housing, and I think the greater community in Lewis, who are Lewis voters, full-time residents, are highly opposed to that, and we came in here writing this, knowing that, so.
I mean, we started out with things you don't want.
Yeah.
More parking problems.
Yep.
More short-term rentals. You know, we heard that loud and clear, the short-term rental task force or committee heard that. And we started out trying to say, what can we do that will pass, you know, that, that...
That our residents will be feel comfortable with.
Yeah.
You know, and, and the other thing, I think it's important, too, is that there's a lot of, it's very self-limiting, because first of all, when you're talking about lot dimensions, and who has the room for this, you're already, the pool's way down with lot coverage. So I don't want anybody hearing about this and thinking that, whoa, they're gonna build a million of these. They're not, because very few properties in Lewis are going to qualify. But there are some special situations where this could be really beneficial for the homeowner. And no, we do not want part-time property owners having tenants that they are not personally there, invested in, monitoring. And a paid property manager is not going to be right on hand twenty-four hours a day.
Barbara?
As the short-term rental people have already figured out.
I agree, I agree with all that, but another thing that's going to limit the number is the parking issues. Now, there are homes in Lewis that have no parking spaces, no off-street parking, so they're out of the pool.
Right.
And then there are the limitations on driveway widths, and so they're out of the pool. So I'm not sure how many you're actually gonna be able to have.
So if, one, I wanna answer one of your questions from earlier, if I may. Residential, residential building code is gonna require electric, so it will have, because if it doesn't have electricity, it's not a habitable house.
But a separate meter is the question.
I'm not sure if that's in city code.
It's part of the National Electric Safety Code.
Right, but we were, whatever was in city code, Alex will double-check on that. And then the driveway width is only at the property line. Once you get past your property line, as long as you're meeting lot coverage, it can be as wide as you want it to be.
I also.
Sorry.
That's another piece of code that you need to button down and clarify.
Driveways? Driveways?
Yeah, which you just described with respect to, once you get on private property, you can, there are no restrictions on how large that driveway can be.
Except for lot coverage.
Except lot coverage, lot coverage.
Lot coverage, yeah.
But with the exception of that, you know, that's, yeah.
Okay, but we're not doing driveways today?
No, I just wanted to make sure that, as, as it relates to parking, you can have a wider driveway on your own property.
Okay.
I also, whoops.
Okay.
I also have one more. Why do we say, when we're defining accessory dwelling unit, a dwelling unit customarily incidental and subordinate? Isn't it just?
What line number are you on, Barbara?
Two-seventy-seven, yeah. Customarily. I'm wondering if customarily needs to be there.
Okay, we are looking to Alex to...
But in another part of the order, it didn't say that the homeowner could choose to use the ADU, the subordinate building? And that's why it customarily be subordinate, but not always. In the, in your case of where...
If it's inside.
The older family wants to move in a small unit.
Right. That's a good reason, right there. It allows you to go both ways.
Tim?
Yes, thanks. I did not do my research to prepare for this question, but I bet Alex might be able to support me on this. Somewhere in our code, I believe there is language to the effect of, that addresses the effect of, or the benefit of light and air as it relates to the impact of any development on a lot, and its effect on neighboring properties as it relates to light and air, and how that affects the surrounding properties. Is there, is there anything in here that addresses that specifically to the ADU?
So no, I'll answer both of those questions. First, your question, in the context of site plans or when there's a discretionary element to reviewing a plan, planning commission can certainly consider health, safety, welfare factors such as light and air and flow of traffic. Getting back to the customarily incidental piece, an ADU is an accessory structure, and so customarily incidental comes from the definition of accessory structure. It's already in the code. It's not something we're adding.
Okay.
But the, the one thing that is relevant here, I do believe, is that once, if this was to be adopted by council as it's personally drafted, the planning commission going forward would no longer be part of the review process. That would certainly be administrative at that point in time. So I actually think that it's really important that the planning commission in the shaping of this draft, that, you know, those kinds of details are, you know.
The light and air?
Yeah, the light and air.
I mean, I think if, I mean, right now, if I wanted, if I own an imaginary home that doesn't have a garage on it, I could build that garage as long as I meet building code and the coverage issues. There's no review of the design of it, of where its shadow is going to be, you know, like, the light and air only comes into consideration when we're looking at things like subdivisions or, you know, my...
Commercial development.
Commercial development, that kind of thing.
And I recognize that, and all I'm just saying is, since the genesis of this document is coming from this committee, it seems to me that you have an opportunity to possibly address it or shape, you know, maybe.
Well, we do address it by building standards and codes and height. I mean, so in a sense, we do it because we're not recommending this is for only one zone or anything else. It's basically saying, if you wanna build new, you have height restrictions depending on where you are in the city. And so that was, that to me addresses air and light and all of those other things, anyway.
And if you think about it, if they're gonna build new, most likely it's gonna be built as a detached structure, which has a maximum height of twenty-four feet and one and a half stories.
Right, but that could be very impactful if the adjacent property is a one-story home, and you're building a structure that's twenty-four feet high.
Well, it's still not conform to all setbacks.
Oh, I understand.
So the setbacks provide the...
I'm not sure why we would be designing something different for this than would apply to a garage, for example. So you can already do all of these things. That's the property owner's right in terms of the law, right? And I don't know, it, it would seem odd to me to set a different set of standards for an ADU than we'd have for the garage that might be built.
But a garage could only be a one-story building.
But a garage could only be a one-story building, the ground level is 10 feet tall.
No, a garage, a garage is considered a detached structure, which has maximum height of 24 feet and one and a half stories.
Right, but most, most garages don't have that kind of elevation on their roofline.
A lot of them that have been lately, they're getting close.
I understand what the trend is now, I understand that everything's supersized. I'm just saying, for the structures that are existing, with the idea that they can be converted or they have the potential of offering a footprint on which an ADU could be constructed atop or the ground level, a garage could be converted to a living room space, you know, it's.
I think, but I think this is, it's what's happening, and it's not related to ADUs. New development is taking advantage of lots of other things.
Sure.
And we, as you know, I mean, of course, and, and so, we have, in any area that was old, let's take Alexandria, what you and I are familiar with, they're tall houses now next to little houses.
Yep.
And then, when that little house is sold, it becomes tall, you know, but the new one in. I think that's just the, Brent always describes it as, we're in the teenage years of urban planning, you know, so there'll be that, there'll be that change. But we're not putting, I think what the chair is saying, we're not putting any extra restrictions just because you want an ADU, because if not, if someone really wants an ADU, then they'll just build a garage, because we don't put restrictions and flip it anyway. I mean, there are a lot of ways to get around it, so the Planning Commission isn't about restricting any style to that.
I'm aware of that.
Yeah.
I'm aware of that part of it.
The, the other thing that's in here, sort of implied is, you're right that somebody could, if this were to be adopted as it is, go and build that garage, convert it to an ADU with a license and so on, and they would not have to come to the Planning Commission. And they would not have to go to the Board of Adjustments.
That's correct.
And, you know, from the get-go in this, there are few, by right, which is what I'm talking about, ordinances that allow that. But you don't get any ADUs at all if you have to go through three Planning Commission meetings and the Board of Adjustment to, and hire a lawyer and an engineer and an architect and whoever, and meet requirements that, that come from that, so.
And I suspect that the Planning Commission would not like to be in the position of reviewing every.
Right.
Garage and structure, so, yeah.
But if they're in a historic district, they still.
Yeah, but, but, you know, I think if there's a concern about air and light, then you need to look at the main code.
Exactly.
And apply it to everything, you know.
That's correct.
So, I, I want to try to bring this.
One other quick comment. So, any new program that we roll out in the city, it is new. And so, de facto, we're going to, we're going to see what it's like. And Commissioner Ewald might be right, we have this great program and nobody takes advantage of it.
Yeah.
You know, and we think everyone's rushing to the gate and no one is. Well, why is that? That's something I think we should say to mayor and city council or in their public hearings, if it's not, if people are not taking advantage of it, why? Have we made it too strict or whatever? So, it doesn't mean, the mayor eloquently said this on Monday night with lots of conversations on lots of ordinances, we can go back and look. But, and so, that's not addressing, I'm not addressing your, your comment, Council members at all. I'm just saying, this is a very, I think, well-thought-out approach. Let's give it a run, I mean, in terms of our voting, and then it goes through its normal process, and then, let's see how it works, you know? Is it not working? Well, then, what do we have to do about that? Because we do all, we want, the goal is to have affordable workforce housing. We may just not have the right description of it yet, who knows?
And, and to be clear, again, there is going to be a limit on where this can be applicable based simply on the lot coverage.
Yes.
Number two, we didn't create something that bends existing code. We complied with an existing code, we just streamlined it, and then we created incentive for lower income, for lower rents, and also streamlined the process a little bit. But nothing was changed to increase coverage or, you know, bend existing code whatsoever.
Okay. I, I want to try to bring this to a conclusion now. A final comment, Barbara?
Just, I think that, you know, the BPW will want to look at this at some point before it goes to vote, before mayor and city council, see if, I'm thinking, if I were to build an ADU, I would probably want to have water and electric separately metered, but there are a lot of costs that go with that. And if this were truly for affordable housing, maybe we could, maybe BPW could find some kind of accommodation. I can't speak for the board, but I'm just saying, you know, it's something we'd want to look at.
So, so to your point, that was a big discussion of ours, but I also know, being somebody that built for many years, that I could put two meters on a property with one electric feed coming in and then manually do it, not through BPW, but figure out who it was what if I want to separate that. So, we didn't want to be in that position to say it was required or not required. Now, BPW has some reason that they need separate meters or some reason that they need separate sewer hookups.
Can you do it for water too?
But they're not, so, this is going to be a homeowner decision now?
So, if you.
Because they're doing it as an ADU, so, do they, that's, that's a personal owner of the property, whether they care enough, you know?
I'm just remembering the days when I was an apartment rental and, you know, I kept my heat at 78 because I liked to walk around in shorts and whatever in the winter, you know, and we gave those kinds of things.
That's, that's true, but we did, on two occasions, talk to BPW, okay? We had Austin come to one of our meetings and we checked with him again this week, and the issue was the cost of installing additional meters. And as you know, in, if you're in the wrong part of the town because of where other lines are and so on, you can spend 6,000 bucks to do this.
Yes.
And then, you also get a separate bill with a ready-to-serv minimum of $100.
Right.
And, you know, when we're talking about $1,000 kind of rents.
Yeah.
That wasn't a contribution to our mission, so. You look at it, but that's how we wrote it and that's why we wrote it.
And the mission always being to create more long-term housing for workers in this region.
And to eliminate burdens.
BPW?
For people to have access to.
No, I think they're going to want you to make the presentation.
Andrew?
I just have a question for Alex, just confirmation for, you know, because there are some restrictions, so that, or they, this is in a good place moving forward with the capping authority and with the 15 miles, all those types of incentives, you don't feel there's an issue there from all the city?
I think we're in good shape there. I, it does state that city council can amend the 40 cap. I don't think we need to actually include that because city council can always amend the code.
Yeah.
But it's in good shape, I think.
Okay, I'm going to try to bring this to, okay, this is the last.
You know, I, I really admire you guys, keeping the mission of the 41, creating incentives here, and I really appreciate you doing that. And I will say that, you know, when you're discussing with the House Hospital about this, while we, the city might not be able to add incentives, much of this program will probably qualify for some of the state programs that are being pushed right now, and quite frankly, the Delaware Workforce Thousand Program, that was just recently passed by the House, I believe, and is now moving on to the center or reverse with the others. These, it, it looks like, according to the House Hospital, that ADUs within the city of Lewis will qualify for that, and that's 20% reduction in construction costs if you, if you, if you're committed to keeping your rents down.
Yeah. How is that achieving?
What's that?
How are those 20% reductions?
It's, it's, it's a brand-new bill, it's called a Delaware Workforce Thousand Program.
I believe it's still going through the process.
So, that goes towards the building of, of property rents, it is not a.
It's not a city issue.
No, 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 no.
So.
But I will say though, I think one of the things we should talk about is when they come in for a permit and we, and it's a goal is to keep it affordable, we should tell them about programs to allow them to keep it affordable. What are the programs they're going to apply for, for construction, for instance, and keep it affordable? Maybe we have some literature about what the affordable programs are in state, you know, so that they can say, hey, you want to keep, keep the rent down, that's the motivation. Provide the literature when they come in.
That is another incentive that.
Could be.
Yeah. Okay, I'm going to, I think we've, this is a topic that we've had on the agenda here multiple times, and kudos to the Subcommittee for continuing to work on this through, you know, each of these, these iterations. Where do we stand, or is there someone who is interested in making a motion on this? And you can make a motion with any additions or changes or amendments to it. Are we ready to pass this forward to mayor and city council?
I would make a motion that we forward this to the city council in its entirety as is.
Is there a second?
I second that motion.
Okay. All in favor?
Discussion.
Excuse me, discussion, discussion, sorry. See, I'm, I'm heading out the door there quickly, apparently.
I guess the question is, are we ready to do that? You know, I mean, are there tweaks or anything else that, that, I mean, we have a number of concerns, you know, from Deborah and Bill arguing about the affordable one. Kevin raises some good points. Will they be resolved by more discussion? Or, or is a better path, send it to mayor and city council in a public hearing and get some good input with that?
To your point, I mean, for me, I, I think this has got to go to the public, so I think we send it to mayor and council, they hold a public, because that's when you're going to know what, what the cities think.
That's right.
I mean, I think for the three of us, I mean, this has been a year.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
We've had every discussion, we've argued every argument, I mean, I'm for sending it, I'm against it, a vote.
Yeah, and if there's any more time back with you all, it isn't going to change probably much.
It's not going to change Bill's mind, it's not going to change the neighbor's mind.
It's time to move it forward.
Yeah, there, there is an opportunity if someone wants to, you know, try to add an amendment to it. I, I didn't hear anything, but, well, I, I won't presuppose, I didn't hear anything coming forward that there was a groundswell of support for a change, but.
I, I expect there'll be more input from the public and from the city council that may make changes, tweaks to this, you know, but I, I think it's time to, to test it. Yeah. Move it forward.
Let's call for the vote.
Okay. I'm calling for the vote now. Let's go round and vote individually.
Me first.
You're first.
Uh, you know, I, I really admire the work that the committee has done, I mean, it's a, I don't even give you a quick term, I guess, I can go to the top of the work, and I think you've done a great job on it. You know, I, I support the measure, I really do, and I don't, I don't want to come across as saying I'm against any of the motivations here. I, I, you know, I, I, I'm very much in support of the idea of excluding short-term rentals now, like, when I go to long-term, that's fine. I, you know, I, at the same time, I think, I'm, I'm interested to see what councils, mayor, council is going to come up with when it comes to public feedback on this, you know, whether or not all the provisions we talked about are going to go through as easily. But I vote yes.
Commissioner Ewald?
Just forwarding it to council, right?
Yes, that's right.
In its current.
In its cur, in its current form, the, the version that you have in front of you tonight, sorry.
I vote yes. We have used due diligence to really explore things the public might bring up, administrative issues, burden on the city for, for starting something there. And we, we've delved in, but the bottom line is, we also have been here long enough to remember a time when people who worked in this city lived in this city, and we need to make those opportunities happen again. And I believe this is one of the little things that we can do, and I mean little, we, we're not talking about tons of units, but if we could, we could create 20 apartments a year that people who work in this city could live in, it would be tremendous. And so, I think the benefits outweigh any questions, and I vote yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
I'm going to vote yes as well, on the basis that's being forwarded to council for review and public scrutiny, I'll call it. You know, listening to Kevin, I'm really thought about his angle as well, knowing there's a lot of houses sitting empty and that could benefit from, even though the residents aren't, aren't there, where this, this ordinance is, is requiring it to be long-term, not short-term. I like the idea of a property manager possibly. If the, if the city has control of it through permitting, they can also have a contact on hand, and it, you know, that you have to designate somebody who we can call at a moment's notice if there's a problem on the property. Again, going back to the original thing, this is workforce housing, and that's what we're trying to achieve, and I think more work, we have to get public input, but there's more thought to be put into, especially some of the comments that Kevin had. But I vote yes.
Well, I'm going to vote yes because I'm exhausted. We started out with what is a crying need here in Lewis, in Sussex County, where people have a job or two, cannot afford a place to live. This is a small step for Lewis to do something, and that doesn't really cost anything other than the generous contribution from mayor and city council for the, giving up the gross rental receipt. But it allows us to have many of the, the benefits Deborah talked about with people able to support seniors, people able to live near. The win, as I keep saying to most anybody who listen, is that nice third-grade teacher who's teaching your grandchildren might be around to teach your grand, grandchild, your other grandchild two years later, rather than the high turnover we get in our education and our nursing and, and all of that. So, I vote yes.
I vote yes because we're trying to perfect this, but in fact, we have never passed a perfect regulation. It always needs to be tested in the field and, and massaged later. And so, I, I think we can't wait for perfection, we need to move on it.
Yeah, I, I vote yes because it's a needed encouragement and it's needed guidance. And then, I would echo what Commissioner Mosher said. I've only been on for a year and a half, and I've never seen anything that doesn't, you think, oh, what about this part two? So, I think that this is, you've done an excellent job, you've, you've gotten to some good common ground among your Subcommittee, and now this is something for the public to digest and feed back, and let's get moving with it. So, I really support the effort and the effort of the Subcommittee, so I vote yes.
So, I vote yes due to the fact that we've beat this as much as we could beat it between the three of us on this. But I also think it's time to get this in front of the public and see what the, the real view is from the community and stuff, and then, you know, go from there. But I, I think we've put as much thought into this as we could, we've gotten to a point. We've gotten to a point where the three of us on the items that we're gonna butt heads on, we're still gonna butt heads. And I think this is the best draft that we can get to the next stage. So I vote yes for this reason.
I also vote yes. I agree, we, we, we hope we're writing perfect code when we put it forward, but we, we, we never know whether it's, how, how imperfect it may or may not be until, you know, the rubber hits the road. And I also vote yes, because I think this subcommittee had a diversity of opinions on it. You've really talked things through, researched things through, and discussed things through, you know, quite deeply, I think. And so I think it is time to get a view from the, the residents of, of Lewis, Lewis on this. So I believe it is unanimous, and it moves on to mayor and city council. Okay, I just want to point out, it's now eight PM. At eight-thirty, we'll have to take a vote if we want to extend the, the discussion. But we're moving on now to E two, discussion and possible recommendation to mayor and city council regarding amendments to the wetlands ordinance, chapter one ninety-seven dash seventy-four. And I'm gonna turn things over to, to, first to Amy, and then to the esteemed Michaela Ripekima. Did I get it right? Okay.
So what you have in front of you is the wetlands redraft by the environmental subcommittee, with great credit to you, Michaela. I just wanna, particularly for newer member, newer members of our planning commission, to just give you a very brief background. We've been asked at the environmental subcommittee to stay focused on specific areas that needed to be reviewed, either definitions, cleanup, or take some new approaches. So we've done that in all cases, and we have more things to come in front of you going forward. Wetlands was a rather detailed, good efforts that were done by whomever wrote the ordinance before, but fairly complicated, some harder math than I was used to in terms of how you map them, define them. And so what you're gonna see, and Michaela's gonna go through this presentation, what we've done is tried to be holistic, provide clarity on wetlands, particularly putting non-title and title. And, and I'm gonna turn this over to Michaela, and I wanna tell you why I'm turning it over, but I'm here to back you up on anything, so have no worries, Michaela. We've been fortunate enough, and I don't know what Charlie and Brent do to dip into their intern pool either, but we've been so fortunate on the environmental subcommittee to have, have Singh and now with Michaela, individuals who are young in their career, but tenacious and persevering and polite to keep every member, and you all know my subcommittee members, every single member with questions politely to move them around. But what I would tell you as commissioners is the theme that I keep saying, we have to make room for the water instead of blocking the water. And I think Brent's presentation gave you that. So concrete, water can figure out around. We've gotta use, we have to stop fighting nature, work with nature, and protect the assets we have, which translate to protect the properties as best we can as well. So, Michaela, if you can come up, I want you to go through the primary assumptions we used, and I give our task manager, we had, we break it up into subcommittees to task groups, and Barbara Curtis chaired this as well, of how you, how we started and get to where we are for your consideration tonight on a new wetlands ordinance. Michaela?
Thank you, Amy. Again, my name's Michaela, I'm an intern right now with GMB. So the environmental subcommittee has been discussing the wetlands ordinance since January of this year. Multiple experts were brought in and comments were viewed from Delaware Senator of Inland Bays, Tree Commissioner, and other varying groups that are involved in wetlands and have concerns regarding wetlands. When working, the subcommittee was guided by certain assumptions and ideals, and these were first led by the task force and then brought into the subcommittee for a review and comment from all of the members. So the task force, again, was led by Barbara, it had Amy, Joellen, some GMB members as well as Janelle sitting to make sure things were fitting into code and meeting the environmental concerns. So these assumptions and ideals that we were guided by included, we wanted to have a science-based approach first, so that was goal number one. We wanted to make sure that we had the goal of being a resilient coastal community throughout the code, reach the goal of being consistent, clear, and enforceable, so readability throughout the code. We also wanted to align with Sussex County wetlands language, as they have new language as of May twenty-twenty-two, and also wanted to listen to comments, again, from those experts like Delaware Senator of the Inland Bays on their comments, as well as other comments from environmental subcommittee members. So some highlights of this draft that you'll see is, as Amy said, we decided to take a holistic approach for the city of Lewis. So there is now applicability statement, which is section C, and it's applying it to all development on all parcels. In addition to that, we also have emphasis on the purpose statement, to be educational and share the spirit of the ordinance from the start, to kind of help guide it through the rest of the state, the section. Clarifications were done to make sure that title versus non-title was understood throughout, as well as the use of a certified professional wetland scientist was a definition added and then extended through the code to make sure we were being consistent and having the proper individuals to work on the wetlands as needed. And then again, the code aligns with Sussex County, what Sussex County has accomplished. So overall, the environmental subcommittee has worked very hard over the past four months. This is actually finishing a National Wetlands Month, so what a great time to finish the draft. And it was passed unanimously, unanimously from the members present, and their hard work and dedication was appreciated as we protect, work to protect the habitat in the city of Lewis. So this is just the draft above you.
So by, if you go down through the sections, the scope.
Yes.
So, the scope is. Purpose is educational, but I wanna pause on the scope and the applicability. We did look at large lots, we looked at major subdivisions, minor subdivisions, but what we came to is, if you have a wetland, you have a wetland. And Demrec even has this nice quote on their materials, if you're lucky enough to have a wetland. And so it's any place in town that has a wetland, title or non-title, this would apply, and buffers would apply. So you have to protect that wetland, and once you go through the buffer language a little bit, so folks know.
Yeah, so if you scroll down, I believe it's section E. So here in the buffer, or, keep going, actually. Yeah, wetland buffers H. So here is where we have the wetland buffers language for you. So originally, in the city of Lewis code, it was a wetland buffer of fifty feet, and it was unspecified title or non-title, but it was presumed title. So here we've added and specified title wetlands would be a hundred feet, which meets Delaware Senator of Inland Bays comments, as well as Sussex County language. And then we have the non-title wetlands going to that fifty feet, which was originally held by the city of Lewis. Moving on to that, we have our permitted activities, and if you scroll down, they have been separated into title and non-title. So these are activities that would be allowed in the buffer. We also have a section allowed for in the wetlands, but certain things can be done. You wanna be able to enjoy the wetlands at a distance, pre-keep them safe, but also experience and understand their importance. And then other things need to be done, such as stabilization of outfalls for stormwater management and things like that.
One of the other specifics that we put in is, there's no reason to have applied chemicals in a buffer or a wetland. Now, we also recognize that the city's park contracts have the ability for integrated pest management, and we know we have a glyphosate plan, I mean, we have a, not a, we have a fragmity plan. So we didn't call out fragmities, we did in like two drafts before, but we basically are saying, these wetlands are critical, let's not put added chemicals into them, unless the city has to do that, and so the integrated pest management plan would come into place. Now, does the city have its own integrated pest management plan? No, but all the contractors do. So I think that's something that, that should you all decide to move this forward, one of our recommendations should be, let's document the integrated pest management plan. They, there are plenty that exist, all tech universities have them for their states, and we have them in our contracts. But what we don't want is a contractor going to a chemical as a first choice. Because, yes, you might be able to put in a chemical that is safe or aquatic, but it's not safe for other, other animals. And not sa- not safe for people. So you're seeing this as the beginning of one of the other things we have to do to protect our environment as well. So no additional applied chemicals, unless that those are approved and their application is targeted and approved by the city. But I think it's the message that these are critical habitats for flood management, stormwater management, habitat. The best thing that you can do, if you have a wetland on your property and you're worried about that wetland encroaching, quite honestly, is to plant. The worst thing you can do is put up a wall, and that's not gonna protect you for long. So this, this fact is, is one of the things that we wanted to do, is how do you protect property rights? So that you protect the property by actually doing things to protect, so that the water gets absorbed. That's what you're after, you know, you're after the water getting absorbed. The other thing that we did look at, and we couldn't find a solution, and Commissioner Mosher was unhappy that we couldn't find a solution, that is, if, if one of you has a wetland on your property, and I butt your property, and I don't have a wetland, I would really like, you would really like me to make my property your buffer. And I wish we could do that, but there is no way we could figure out in code to do that. Now, it might work in open space, and we're discussing that, but we have to stay within property lines. So we have to say, only if that wetland is on your property must you, must you protect your buffer. So what does this really mean for an individual? I think up until that section, this is all pure common sense. Where is the impact? Oh, I wanna put a shed right where my wetland is. This would impact that, but just by fifty feet, think about a fifty-foot hose, okay? It's not a huge distance. And quite frankly, if you build a shed in a wetland, good luck for your shed, because it's not gonna last that long, because the water's coming, and the water's rising. Sea level is rising, and the heat of the water is rising as well, increasing. So when we got to the property right conversation, which we do get to, it was really, how are we really protecting that person's property? Well, we're telling them, don't build on a buffer. You know, obviously, you don't go into a wetland, but you don't build on the buffer, because the buffer is your best buffer to that wetland encroaching upon your property. So once we got that full round conversation, we, as Michaela said, we voted unanimously at the subcommittee. That took, you don't wanna have those, I can imagine your conversations on the house, we had some of those on ours too. And, and I'm lucky that I have two commissioners on the subcommittee to help too. But that came full circle, and I think that, and everybody got comfortable with that part as well.
Could you comment on the ephemeral wetlands?
Yes.
Because I had trouble matching the definition of ephemeral wetland to the points under D wetlands and the definitions there. Because I certainly can imagine, I mean, I think many of us, many people out, far from any wetland area, title or, or what we'd consider non-title, until I read ephemeral, may have a depression in, even in our yards, that fill up with water for a period of time after a storm.
Would you like to address that?
Yeah.
I'm gonna defer to Brent.
Or, or we have, as you drive along, the, the, you know, drainage ditch by the roads, you know, that, I, I didn't ever think of those. I mean, I think of them as, as important.
Right.
But I didn't think of them as a wetland that I'd need to have a distance back from. I thought their whole purpose was to.
Taking that into consideration is the reason why we went in depth with the certified locator and the wetlands report.
Okay.
So they're going, the person that is trained in this, that does it every day, that is certified, is gonna determine whether or not that is a non-title wetland.
So he or she would know the difference between a low spot and what really is an ephemeral wetland. And we're saying that if anybody comes forward for a, now, how does this trigger? It's a building permit. We've learned this from our city planner. How does anything get triggered in the city? It's a building permit. So it's very clear where our title wetlands are, and, and the city staff knows mostly where the non-title are too. But if they suspect you're near one, then they're gonna ask you to, to demonstrate with a certified professional, do you or do you not?
But isn't ephemeral a subcategory of non-title?
It is, yes.
Yes, yes. I think of ephemeral as, as a gardener, as Virginia bluebells. They come up, they look like they go away, they really don't go away, they finish their job and they go under. This is not dissimilar, a wetland appears, but then it recedes. So you may think it doesn't exist, or it was just a big rainstorm. But a ephemeral wetland is, think of it just below the surface, and it will bubble up, because it is a wetland.
I, I think another important assertion here between like a ditch and an ephemeral wetland is, again, you have that soil, you have those plants, and that hydrology. So those are the things they use to determine if it's a wetland or not. If it's a ditch, it may have really good hydrology, may be great for drainage, but it probably doesn't have the plants there. Doesn't have that ability. It's not the habitat. So an ephemeral wetland is that habitat, it just happens to be seasonal, so it comes and goes based on dry and wet seasons.
Don't, don't we have some of that habitat in our drainage ditches, though?
We do, but it's, whether or not it, it meets all three.
All three.
Of the hydrology and everything. So your discussion about ephemeral is a non-title, we had like three different meetings discussing that, or not to include that, or just put non-title.
Yeah.
And everything that was inclusive in that.
I'd like to ask something more of a science question on this. So throughout the city, we have areas that were once dry and are now wet, you know, are kind of perking up when, when it rains, and are on the edge of floodplains, and are these wetlands?
Most likely currently no. They may be in that teenage transition time of growing up and becoming that. But if you were to go get a delineation right now, probably not.
Councilman Richard.
Uh, thank you. I was just gonna offer an example, if anyone is struggling with this definition of ephemeral wetlands. I was gonna suggest there is such a wetland along Pallottown Road, between Pallottown Road and the canal, and it is on the west side, if you will, so as you're driving from downtown Front Street area, going out Pallottown Road on the right-hand side, and you're just above the Little League area. There's an area there, and that wetland, if that is in fact your wetland, and in my mind it is, it meets this definition, that has grown significantly over the last ten years, and during the last three years, it's exploded with respect to size and the variety of vegetation that's grown in there. I ask a really big question, though, to that. When I first started learning about wetlands, this is during the last five to eight years, I'll say, the term that was used at that time was not ephemeral, but if I remember correctly, I think I remember the term to be, I wanna say it was called a vernal wetland, or something like that, is that the same?
Vernal pond.
Vernal pond.
Yeah.
It's called a vernal pond.
Yeah.
Is that the same?
Very similar.
Yes.
It's.
But in science class of at least my generation, maybe yours, I don't know, we called them vernal, vernal pools, vernal ponds.
Okay.
And you would go there on sign strips to look at salamanders and other things.
But so now that might be.
It's now really referred to as ephemeral.
Okay, thank you.
It doesn't mean that you don't see it in the language still as vernal, but it is ephemeral. And what I would say, as Brent said, we had, I don't know, three meetings on this topic, for the big site developments, the professionals know this. We just add it for clarification for that homeowner that might wanna say, but it's never here. It just seems to be here only in the spring, well, but that could be a wetland.
Commissioner Davis?
So I have two, the same question, but it's in a couple spots. Because in the definitions, you have that areas inundated or saturated by surface water or groundwater at a frequency and duration sufficient to support net under normal circumstances, blah, blah, blah. Who determines sufficient to support? Where, does that play somewhere else in there that, that, because for me, that's, okay, you're saying it's, it's sufficient to support, but that's the spot.
I, I can say, this discussion that we're having, wetlands aren't a subjective thing. They're objective, they're identified by a certified wetlands professional scientist. You just don't go around and say, ooh, that, that's a wetland, or that's a wetland. They have to be, for our purposes, delineated by a professional scientist that's registered with the, the organization that we outline. What's it called?
Society of Wetlands Scientists, yes.
So, so I'm good with that, but then why is that? So it takes into account the site, the hydrology, the soils, and the vegetation.
So A.
So you might have the hydrology there, but not the vegetation, and it may not qualify. Right, but in the definitions, in, in A, and then in the non-title, it has that same language. So that definition is pretty much taken from, I think, the state definition.
This is current city definitions. This was not changed. This was not changed, other than the addition of these include but are not limited to isolated seasonal ephemeral wetlands. The current non-title wetland definition is what you see there, just with that one line.
And I believe we took it from, from the state.
Well, I would argue with the state too, then.
From the state.
Yeah.
Pretty sure we took that from the state.
I'm sitting there going, okay, that says right there that it's duration sufficient to support, so.
Right, right.
I mean, in the end, it's B and C that are critical though, right? So...
Yes.
Where we're, I mean, in a sense, A helps the common person understand what it is.
That's right.
And what the experts are using.
It doesn't help this out. That's because you're not common, because we don't, you understand. Exactly, you didn't need that, but others would need that, because it is that, that tri-pronged.
Other questions or comments?
I can ask a quick question. If you're going to characterize this for the public in a couple of sentences, in a way, you say, how would you characterize most impactful things about this particular ordinance, this most aware of it before? What's the most significant change in your mind?
Really, that's an excellent question. We've made it simpler, 100% simpler. If you read the kind code, I mean, I don't know if Commissioner Mosher and Heffner, I mean, there were diagrams, zone As, that you had to calculate the math and you had to go in to the, the math was, how to delineate, was a percentage. I mean, I read it and thought, I have no idea. I don't, I don't know how to do it. So, we have simplified, clarified, and we've also clarified that none, the code wasn't clear on title and non-title. Sometimes it referenced both, sometimes it didn't. And so, and then there was a long list of permitted things, didn't make sense for certain. So, what we've done, that's how I would answer this. We have clarified it and we have made it holistic to the city. If you have a wetland, and as Charlie said, it's not a, like, I think I have a wetland, it's recognized by professionals. If you have a wetland, you're part of protecting all of us if you have a wetland. So, you have some responsibilities. And let me also say, you have some enjoyment. Wetlands are beautiful and Denrec recognizes that. If you're, and they say, if you're lucky enough to have a wetland on your property, you're lucky. Birds, migration, all those kinds of things. So, that, I would say it's clarity and it's holistic.
I'd also say that it's necessary because the Supreme Court has changed the rules.
Yeah.
And so, this is reacting to that and trying to say what's, what applies here in Lewis.
Commissioner Davis?
So, I guess then, my last part is this H D, just to clarify, it has for major and minor subdivisions, no wetland buffer shall be on any lot intended to be developed with one or more dwellings. So, that, that only is going to apply to anything new that's developed.
Only to those, that's right, anything new. That's a different, that, that's the only place you see that we pulled up the subdivision because it was very different and unique. You're absolutely right.
And there is no buffer management plan required if there's a buffer on an individual lot.
Right.
Correct.
That just seemed a little much.
It seemed much for individuals. However, there will be, there are and there will be updated best management practices. So, if you're that homeowner who says, I have a wetland on my property and I have this buffer, I don't know what I should do with it, the city keeps up a B and P and we're going to be adding to those kinds of things of what you can do, like mowing, applied chemicals. But we're not going to make individuals apply, but developers, yes, they would have to. And then an HOA, in accepting a development, would also have responsibility, just like they have it for open space and everything else. They'd have responsibility to protect the, the buffer on that HOA property.
Thank you. Amy, as, as a part of writing the ordinance, is there an updated map showing the wetland delineations throughout the city?
Good question. The title, you guys can correct me, the title, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, you can go on their site and you can get title. Non-title, because it, because it does not have, I think Denrec eventually will, but non-title, no. So, what happens is, it's administered locally, so your planning and building department, when you come in for a permit, they're going to know, I'm going to just guess, 75 to 80%. They know where the title wetlands are. And so, they're going to help you on that. But no, there isn't like a, it's not like FEMA where I can give you the, the 1% map. It doesn't exist nationwide, it doesn't exist.
Well, I guess my, part of my question then is based on the changes we're seeing in climate and all that.
Yep.
10 years ago, it might not have been a wetland, but based on what you're saying, it could very well be now.
Absolutely.
Yes.
And to that point, the wetlands only, the clock only starts ticking when they're delineated and that report's completed.
Okay.
So, if you're thinking about a subdivision now and you wait and we get another wet winter, you're losing ground.
Right, right.
So...
Right.
Okay. And that's a, and that's a, I guess a tail end of my comment is lead, this is all leading up to establishing a buffer.
That's right.
Where I, I thought I understood there really was no buffer.
There is a buffer in our code, it's 50 feet.
50 feet.
It was not necessarily clear, was it title or non-title?
Okay.
You could read it both ways. So, we went, we did the 100-foot buffer because it's probably not going to apply to land in Lewis, but if we annex any land in, that is what Sussex County has. So, we took there 100 for title and then on the 50, we took our code and then we took the input from the center of inland base. What did they recommend? 50 was their minimum. I will tell you that the leading states, State of Washington, Maine, they're all moving to 75 to 100. What's happening nationwide is that wetland buffers are getting larger to protect the wetland and to protect the personal property. So, I would imagine, three, four years from now, this will come up again and we'll see whether 50 is holding. And remember that 50 doesn't mean that we're anticipating it comes to 50, we're trying to give the water some place to go before we have to go to the next level.
And I think it's important to, to understand that we eliminated wetlands averaging, the buffer averaging, which I know this commission has dealt with on numerous development projects where they're able to get 50 on the average across the whole development, but it might tighten down to 25 in some areas.
Yeah.
I, I could understand how to do it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Exactly.
Garbage.
I also agree with Melanie that it's frustrating that we can't do anything about the buffers, but I'm wondering if in three and four, three or four years, we can say applicability applies to development on all parcels with wetlands or wetland buffers.
Yeah, that, that could be going forward.
Yeah.
That's right.
I don't think we're ready for it now, but I wish we could do it.
Yes. We are just about at the 8:30 mark, which is the point at which we're going to need to vote if we want to extend our, our meeting. At this point, we haven't completed this discussion, though I think we're close, and we also have not received the reports from the various committees. That said, I think the environmental subcommittee and the housing committee have both, in a sense, had items on the agenda today, and I'm not sure whether you each have more to add besides those.
I'm going to tie you, but 30 seconds.
Okay. And open space, I would think, has something to, to say. So, we're now at the 8:30 mark. Is there an interest in extending the, the meeting and we can extend it by half an hour? We can extend it by an hour?
Do we need a motion? I would like to make a motion to extend it by one hour to make sure that we wrap up the wetlands, which is important and has been waiting. I think within that time limit, we can also knock everything else off the list.
Is there a second?
I'll, I'll second that. This is Nancy's last meeting, we have to make sure we finish it.
See, I thought you were going to say, this is Nancy's last meeting, we have to make sure it lasts more than two hours, okay? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yeah.
So, we, we have one, one opposed, I think it's passed, okay? I, I think we're close on this. Are there any more comments before we try to make a decision whether to, to move this forward?
I, I just did a follow-on on my train of thought as well, is if, if you build a house on a property and didn't have a wetland issue at the time, and you plan to go build that garage for ADU, does this come back up?
Yes, absolutely. So, if you built your house, if you, if your house is already there and so is your garage and it's in a wetland buffer, no, because...
That, that makes sense, but what if you're building a garage?
If you're building new, treat it just like floodplain. We're giving you a warning, hey, you're in a, you have a wetland, so have a buffer. Protect yourself, yes.
And to add to that...
It's only if it's on your property.
Yes.
Right, okay. And then, and, and another comment would be, let's say I've got an approved plan to move forward and the wetlands for one of, whatever reason change, does that, do you have to get re-approved for that?
So, if your plan's still active for three years?
Five years.
We did it five years.
If you're still in that five-year window, you're good. If it sunsets, you start all over.
That was one of the things we thought was really most fair for individuals as well.
Okay.
But, you know, what I think this is going to do, it's just going to be like floodplain. People are, are going to look at their property. We have a subcommittee member who's going to be building and now he's looking very carefully at his property and he's readjusting where his house and his garage is going to be. Good, he's doing the right thing to protect his property.
Right.
Yeah, exactly.
I have a quick comment. Thank you, particularly on the delineations and the definition between the wet, between the title and non-title. I think everything looks excellent. I would personally love to put out there that I would like to see greater set, greater buffers. However, I know it's a fine line and if this is all we can get through right now, then so be it. But I hope this is a wonderful starting point to pass this.
Okay. Any other comments?
I move that we forward this to City Council.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, we'll bring it to a vote then. We, I forgot with the last vote, we always begin with the person who moved it, so my apologies last time.
I believe this is a thoughtful update to our current regulations for clarity's sake and for protection's sake. I think it's an excellent set of standards.
Okay. Commissioner Heffner, you second it?
I'm voting yes also. I agree with Melanie's comments. I would also say that a member of our subcommittee told us a story about where he used to play baseball every night in the summer, over on a baseball field that was right off of Cedar Street. That's wetlands today. So, it is happening here. This is a step in the right direction to recognize that change.
Commissioner Davis?
I'm going to vote yes. I, I appreciate the work and the time that's been put into this. I also, for the property rights side of this, appreciate that you did not put in houses that are existing in this unless they do some big change. So, for those reasons, I'll vote yes.
Can we hear Mariska?
I vote, I vote yes. That's not a big surprise. It is National Wetlands Month, Michaela, so somehow I like that part. But what I'm voting yes, because this is just one more of the tools to put into the planning commission's toolbox as well as mayor and city council and to educate the public. We are a coastal community. We have resiliency issues, this is one of them. This is a common sense approach to use our wetlands and stop fighting our wetlands, but to protect them.
Commissioner Thompson?
I'm voting yes for many of the reasons mentioned already.
Okay. Commissioner Ewald?
I am voting yes for the reasons stated.
Commissioner Keen?
I'm voting yes because I'm all for simplification. You don't want to complicate anything. This is a really nice job, appreciate it.
And I'm voting yes for many of the same reasons. I think this really, not only simplifies, but really clarifies what, what, you know, what the code originally has intended and it makes it much clearer what can and can't be done in each area and what the setbacks would be. I also, in my voting yes, I hope that mayor and city council, as they hold hearings, will have a, a presentation on the wetlands because I think it really helped. I know the subcommittee and planning commission have, have very much been helped by kind of having the science in the background as we're looking at this. So, it's passed unanimously and thank you to Michaela and all the best in your future career. Okay, we're, no new business. We're on to environmental subcommittee. You had a few things to...
Yeah, just very briefly. So, as I take the oath on Monday as city council, Joellen Jordan, who has been on the subcommittee from the beginning, will step in as, and I can only say interim chair, that's all she's agreed to. So, hopefully she'll have a good... And we also have Mary Lyndon Manning that has come on to our subcommittee. The charter of the subcommittee now is to look through everything else that we gave them to do, like forest protection, dark sky lighting. They're looking at, what, what we've given you all and the mayor and city council are the fundamental blocks and now we're working on the second, not meaning their second tier, just the second blocks, particularly where we don't have any ordinance. So, we don't, we have dark sky in subdivision, but not holistic. So, they will come back to you or one of the commissioners will be able to brief you on what their next six to 10 months is going to look like. And they are going to hold, convene a, probably it'll be annually, an environmental public workshop every year to communicate to the public what's been accomplished, what the mayor and city council have approved, and then also what's on the agenda to keep getting public input, just as we've done in the last year.
Great. Housing subcommittee, anything else, Bob?
No.
Okay. Open space subcommittee.
Yes, we've had some very productive meetings. We now have a set of open space requirements, starting with an intent or a purpose statement that has numerous items for the purpose of, of open space. The applicability is going, going to be very clear. And then we have standards. We're going to have, we're not changing the percentage of open space. However, we are saying that so much of it must be active and so much of it must, can be passive. And we are giving definitions of active and passive. We'll have minimum dimensions, we'll have street frontage, contiguity, active open, oh, I spoke about that, and impervious cover number for the open space and ADA accessibility. And then we are also grappling with, how do we provide some open space in commercial zones? And perhaps that has to be a, looking at the percent of coverage that's allowed. But we're, we also want to be very open about what kinds of things can count as open space in a commercial zone, such as green roofs, decks, the islands in the parking lot and all those kinds of things. And then we also have, we're going to offer some guidelines. So, for example, reforestation will be a, a proposal there. Innovative ways to address stormwater management would be allowed there and preservation of, of wildlife habitats. And then we'll have some prohibited activities, particularly application of, of chemicals, with the exception of the City of Lewis Fragmites Control Plan. And then we're, we're also looking at, how can we incentivize people to provide good open space? And perhaps there's a reduction to some degree if certain things are provided, for example, if there's an extensive reforestation plan, if there's an enhancement of a wildlife corridor or if wetlands buffers are extended. And I think that's, that's pretty much what we're covering. I think we need one or two more meetings before we come back to the commission with a final report.
And now on to our reports from our liaisons. Barbara Curtis for BPW?
I think I've spoken enough already.
I think I've spoken enough already.
You have never spoken enough. We always appreciate your input, as we do. Counsel, sorry.
I just want to report out a couple of things. We did pass the free board ordinance, as well as the lot reduction ordinance that was passed. And then we sent some things to public hearing. But I did want to take this opportunity, Nancy, to thank you for your service. And there were a lot of, I know, controversial subdivisions that you took on during your time, but most meaningful are the thing, types of things that you've discussed tonight. The, the number of meaningful ordinances that you've passed in your time as chairperson is impressive, and frankly, a lot, I wish that many of them had been in place when Tim and I first came on council, it would have made some of those other subdivisions less controversial. So, you know, the, the amount of work that you're able to get through this, this commission, and the quality of it is impressive. And I want to thank you for that.
Thank you. And, and I have to say, the, the work was not done by me, but by all of these folks. So, thank you, guys. Then on to Alex Burns.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you for your service and pleasure working with you.
Thank you. Janelle?
So the mayor stole most of my thunder, but they, they're the ones who approved the ordinances, so.
Exactly.
But your next meeting is June nineteenth, which is a federal holiday. Would you like to skip the month of June? Have a different meeting day? I'm looking to the-
Is there, is there anything coming down the pike that we should?
Elections. You need to vote for chair, vice chair, and secretary. That's the only thing you have.
You can't do that.
It's not on the agenda.
Oh, we can't?
No. And because we can only vote after-
We, we do plan to make appointment, some appointments to this committee and others on the twentieth, the day that Amy gets sworn in, we'll make some.
See, it's when their elections get sworn in, after that, we'll get to the ours.
Yeah, you're not technically allowed to hold your elections until after the new member, a certain date of the election for mayor and council is held. So you have to wait until June for elections. But that's the only thing I have on the agenda. There's no, there's no old business, there's no new business.
I recommend that the new person, persons, get the job of definitions.
I, I have, I have the spreadsheet ready to pass on, okay?
After they're appointed.
So, so June nineteenth is a holiday?
Is a holiday, and that is your standing meeting day.
All right.
So the city will not be open. You, I, the only item that would be on, at this point that I have, is elections of officers. Because you have dressed your old business tonight, and I don't have anything else coming.
All right, well, how about if we take a month off?
Okay.
Okay?
I mean, I think if, unless something comes up different, and we're just on the voting part, and just wait till the-
Yeah, there's-
Okay, I, I see this now. I leave, everybody goes on vacation. Uh-huh.
I would also-
Our meetings will end in two hours.
Oh, don't worry. Not going to happen for a few of them. Farther, farther along, but I would like to say, it's been a pleasure working with you.
Yes, with you.
Thank you, and I wish you luck in not having to come to meetings anymore.
Thank you. We're now on to public comment. Do we have any members of the public either on, if you're online, please raise, we have one hand raised, don't we?
Joel and Jordan.
Joel and Jordan.
Tell her she just needs to unmute.
Nancy, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
I would like to also thank you very much for your service, and everything that you have done for the City of Lewis. It's been extraordinary, and I wish you great joy in your future pursuits.
Thank you so much, Joellen. I, I was afraid you were raising your hand to say you weren't going to stay, uh, chair, chair the subcommittee, okay? So I was going to say, skip over that one. Okay, I think we have one other hand raised. I can't see what it is. Oh, Marty Thompson.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Hi. I want to thank you too, for your service. It's just been extraordinary, and I'm sorry to leave you, but I wish you well in, in future numbers. I, I have a quick question about Black House Pond. I'm just curious as to whether, I know it's, it's not title, and I don't think it's salt. I'm just, it's not salty. That seems a little bit brackish. And I'm wondering if it's considered wetlands by the RECOR these days? Sort of thing happened.
Do, do we have an-
That's a man-made pond. It was, I don't know when it was, probably sixty, seventy years ago, yeah. So it doesn't fall any, any jurisdiction.
Well, I've heard that there's no such thing as any pond in Delaware other than a man-made pond. That's what I've been told. It all been made like- But, but it, you know, it's not connected to, you know, boat from the pond out to canal.
Unless you portage a long distance.
Well, there's a, there's a, it's connected by a pipe.
It is.
And the waterfall from the pond goes through a pipe out to the canal, but I don't know where it would fit. I mean, is, is the RECOR no longer involved in regulating that pond, or is it just Denrick and Delaware guys? Or what is it, do we know?
Do we have an answer to that?
What was the question again?
Who's, who's regulating it? Is it the pond?
Is it no longer considered wetlands per the Supreme Court decision?
Michaela?
I would say probably yes, but-
Because it's disconnected, it is probably not, because of the SCOTUS decision, as well as, again, I don't believe Delaware has anything right now on non-title, and since it is non-title, it's not covered. So the next standard would be Sussex County.
So when we say disconnected, she's saying there's an outfall pipe that connects up to the canal. Is, is that what?
Pipe is man-made, it's not unnaturally flowing.
Okay, okay.
Not naturally flowing, okay. Well, I can see there's water spilled down the pond. Yeah, that could be also, it might happen to be done in Black House. Okay, well, thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, I think we're ready to adjourn the meeting.
Except we have one final gift for our departing chair, who has been such a stalwart, such an example for us all. And your calmness and leadership has really been outstanding. We really appreciate all of your efforts.
Thank you so much. I'm not leaving town though, guys, okay? And there are still lots of treats left, and there are little baggies on the table. So as you go out, please take some treats with you, okay?
And Nancy, I'm, I'm just happy that you will come to these meetings and point out our mistakes, and our, you know, and give us, give us voice.
I can't, I can't wait to be on that side, using that microphone, okay? Or on Zoom, yeah, yeah.
You're always-
I, I will, I will boom, boom forth from the, from the, the ceiling here, as if, you know, speaking from on high, yeah, sure. Thank you. Thank you so much. Oh, we need to adjourn, yeah. I think we're now adjourned.